The time is seven. The time is seven P M and I would like to call to order the the December seventh, two thousand and twenty-two Parent and Community Advisory Council meeting. The purpose of this meeting is for the committee to discuss why we are here and what we hope to accomplish as an advisory council. Um, the meeting will be recorded and is on the PG CPS's PG CPS Board webpage for public to view. At this time, we'll go to roll call. Ms. Walker, can you please call the roll?
Uh, Ms. Millhouse?
Yes.
Mr. Epps?
Present.
Uh, I am Ms. Walker. I am present. Dr. Jackson?
Present.
Uh, Ms. Welsh?
Present.
Uh, Dr. Bago? Reverend Dr. Bago? Ms. Lundey? Ms. Wood?
Present.
Um, Adrian Brown? Mr. Ross?
Uh, here.
Ms. Thorpe? Mr. Dixon? Ms. Homscher?
Uh, present.
And Dr. Porter?
Present.
We have a quorum. Ms. Walker?
I, um, uh, hold on, just, I'm trying to make sure that we do.
Okay.
Board liaison is, um, not present.
You said the liaison is not present?
That's correct.
So we have, um, I want to make sure my count is correct. We have four members that are not present and the liaison, including the liaison. Is that correct?
Yes, I have five, including the liaison. Yes. Yes, yes. Okay. Thank you. So we have a quorum. So welcome everyone and thank you for being here this evening. Um, I'm Dolores Millhouse. I am the Chair to the Parent and Community Advisory Council and Representative for District Seven. I want to thank Board Member and Liaison, um, Ms. Shayla Adams Stafford for, um, her support. She is not here with us tonight because she is on maternity leave because she gave birth to a beautiful baby girl.
Congratulations.
Yes, so a well-deserved absence from tonight's meeting. Um, I want to thank the Board Staff for your support. Ms. Rosa Lopez, Mr. Joe Day Newsom. And, um, I think I'm missing someone, Ms. Rosa.
Uh, Ms. Jessica Guerrero.
Ms. Jessica Guerrero. Thank you so much for all that you all are doing tonight and that you all have done throughout. Um, and thank every PCAC member that is here tonight for this meeting. We're going to move to item one point three on the agenda, which is the adoption of the meeting agenda for December seventh, twenty-twenty-two. Are there any objections to adopting December seventh, twenty-twenty-two agenda? Hearing none, the meeting, I'm sorry, adoption of the meeting minutes. It says meeting agenda. Um, it is, I'm sorry, the adoption of the media agenda has been approved. Item one point four, approval of the minute meetings for November second, twenty-twenty-two. Are there any objections to approving the November second, twenty-twenty-two meeting minutes?
I have corrections.
Okay. So at this time, we have an objection. Are there any other objections? Okay. Dr. Jackson, I'll lend the floor to you to provide your comments.
Well, the first one is that I was present. And I'm not in the roster. Yeah, you forget where you are sometimes. I was here. Uh, and then, um, on page six, uh, where I was doing a quick overview of our department, um, the information, uh, should say that, uh, our department is composed of five. Myself as Director, three specialists, and a secretary.
Okay, and if you can read that back one more time.
Yes.
Page six.
Page six. The Department of Family School Partnerships is composed of five staff members. Uh, it's myself as Director, my secretary, and three specialists.
Okay, and you're saying all of that was missing or it just should just, could you just tell me exactly?
It just needs to be corrected in that, that block on page six.
Okay, and it should just say composed of five staff members?
Yes, five staff members.
Okay. Okay, and so based on, um, your comment, you stated that the correct, the first correction should be that you were present and it shows that you were absent.
Yeah.
And on page six, um, the correction needs to state that your office is composed of five staff members.
Yes.
Okay. And so based on those corrections, we will make the updates, Ms. Walker. Is it possible that you can make those updates? And then based on those updates, are there any other comments? So with those updates being made, are there any further objections to approving the November second, twenty-twenty-two meeting minutes? With the changes to include Dr. Jackson was present? And on page six, that the office is composed of five staff members? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. Thank you. Moving to one point five, report from the PCAC Chair. Um, I would like to just thank you all again, um, for your support. What's happening right now is a lot of discovery work to kind of figure out what's happening in the past. You know, what we're doing and how we need to move forward. I did, um, based on our conversation regarding the bylaws and the policies, there were some discussion points that we talked about. And on, uh, November the third, twenty-twenty-two, from nine to ten A M, there was a meeting called with myself, Ms. Adams Stafford, and Ms. Judy McInnes Murray, who is appointed Board Member, uh, and the Chair of the Policy and Governance Committee. In lieu of the meeting, the following items were sent on October twenty-fifth, um, via email to the Board Liaison. And they are as follows. What is the status of the Union Representative joining the PCAC? What is the protocol to invite Dr. Gosin or the Chair Dr. Miller to a PCAC meeting to officially greet the committee? How are the meetings communicated to the public other than posting on the Board of Education page? Such as posting on the district website, newsletters, social media accounts, et cetera? Who can assist in creating a survey that can be sent out to the community to assess key areas of concern? Does each Board Member already have this information? And if so, how can we provide this data to the council? Are there resources available to create a communication channel between the committee and community? During that September, November third meeting, um, those items were discussed. And I can't say the status right now is still being looked into as it relates to union representation. Um, as you all know, we have several unions in Prince George's County School District. So to determine which union represent, which union will be represented on the PCAC was one of my specific questions. Um, as to not exclude anyone from their representation on the council. And it doesn't clearly outline in the policy if, um, each union should have a representation. It just says union representation. We also discussed a joint letter from the, um, CEO and the Board Chair that will be sent out on behalf of the council, introducing us to the school district, letting people know what the purpose of the council is, who we are, um, who's representing them, and what are some of the goals that are charged based on the policy that's set forth as well as the annotated law. The letter has been drafted. It is in draft format. Now, um, at this point, I'm assuming in, um, Ms. Lopez, correct me if I'm wrong, it will now need to go back to Ms. Shayla, um, Adams Stafford, as well as go to Dr. Gosin and Dr. Miller, um, for review and acceptance.
Um, yes, Chairman Millhouse?
Yes.
Yes, so the, the letter has been drafted. Um, so at this time, I'm just waiting, um, to hear back from, uh, Board Liaison Adam Stafford. Um, and she will need to send that request and, uh, review to Board Leadership. Um, that letter might need to be coming from her, um, her signature, but once again, it has to be sent to the leadership for approval.
Yes. Thank you. Um, we also discussed the, um, Board of Education, um, Policy fifteen-hundred that governs the PCAC. Um, and based on the discussion that we had, um, I pointed out that the language in section four standards, item number one, the language reports directly to the Board of Education suggested rewording to ensure that all stakeholders understand that council members' voices still represent the districts and the group that we are appointed to serve and to support and that we work closely with PG CPS, um, as well as the Board and PG CPS CEO. Section four, item six pertaining to the annual voting of PCAC leadership, as well as lastly, not currently, the policy does not currently cover how Board of Education will address the term of a member who moves out of their district during their term. It was also requested, um, during that meeting that we as the council are very mindful about creating subcommittees, ensuring that they are all, um, made up or comprised of outstanding committee members on the council since we were appointed uh, appointed by our Board Members. It was also advised that we continue to, um, take into consideration our reporting timeline when, um, we will begin to identify how often we will report out to the Board of Education and what that format will look like. What I did, um, state, I just carried on what we stated in the last, than our previous meeting, is that at this time, we have not made a decision as a council on how we were going, how often we would want to report and what the report will look like, but we will do so within the next month or so and provide that to them for review. Um, and last but not least, I will say that Ms. Adams, right before she went into labor, was working very hard in providing feedback up until the day. So, um, I appreciate that. I just want to make a last announcement that please be mindful that the PG CPS launched the Climate and Culture Survey. Um, make sure you complete and encourage your peer groups to do the same. Um, our CEO, Dr. Gosin, is hosting a chat with the CEO. Our topic is student safety, Tuesday, December thirteenth. Um, from six to seven P M, it is virtual. And please make sure you check the Board's website. Well, not the Board, but PG CPS's website because there are, um, several timelines as it relates to, um, specialty program application windows that will be closing soon. And that concludes my, um, chair report. And item one point six, we will not be having a report from the Board Liaison because she is absent. Item two point zero, discussion and action items. During our last meeting, I proposed and shared with you a draft vision and mission statement that, um, you all were able to look at, provide any feedback if needed. And so at this time, I would like to, um, open up the floor for any discussion, but I would like us to move forward with adopting the proposed, um, vision and mission statement. Ms. Lopez, if you can bring that up to screen, please. And if we're having any discussions, you're limited to three meetings, um, three meetings, I'm sorry, three minutes for, um, your feedback. Hearing no, um, requests for discussion? I can't. Are any hands raised?
Ms. Welsh, your hand is raised.
Okay. Ms. Welsh?
I just, I, I thought maybe we could talk a little bit about what the mission, what, what the mission statement means. I, I think the vision statement is very clear, but the mission says to create a culture of inclusion where family engagement is embedded in PGS policies, practices, and standards, equipping all stakeholders with the tools to support student academic achievement. Can we just have a, a small conversation about that in terms of?
Yes, we can.
See that?
Yes. Would, would you like to start the discussion?
Would you? I'm, I'm really sort of inquiring to try to better understand how that, how that will work. Like, how do you foresee in your, in your own vision about the mission? What, like, how do you foresee that actually playing out or what role would the PCAC take as says that would be our mission?
So in drafting this, I, you know, looking at the work that we are supposed to do is act as a voice for, um, the district that we serve in or the, the, I would say, um, specialty areas. Um, because it's not just district specific. And, you know, really getting the feedback, getting out, engaging with the community, getting the feedback to really identify how are, the, how is the district working to increase engagement? Um, and is it really inclusive? Is it equitable engagement? Um, later on, we will have a discussion as I share some information about a couple of different best practices and, um, some data that I found that talked about, yeah, there's, there's a title one. Um, family engagement or parent-family engagement policies that are out there that align with the S S A, right?
Right.
But are they really inclusive of all families, community members, um, partners, stakeholders that are not under the Title One umbrella? And as a PCAC, you know, us working to have, um, some surveys in place, are we encouraging the Board to do some listening sessions to address, um, what that looks like? But it really is starting with, do we have a true definition for PG CPS? As it relates to what we see as family engagement for our school district? Um, and if not, how do we support the school district and the Board to adopt such a definition? That's inclusive of the thoughts of all of us stakeholders? And then from that, begin to build on gathering information and, and use that preliminary data as a benchmark that we can then build off year after year and looking at, you know, based on updating the current, current policy, right? Zero-one-zero-five has been outdated since twenty-twelve, right? And so if we start with having the practices updated, making sure they align with the current laws that are in place, um, making sure that we are aligning best practices and looking at how we're changing as a school district, making sure that our engagement practices are lining up with our, um, school district culture as it continues to change. Does that answer me?
Yes, that's, no, no, but that's, clarify, you put a good job with that. Thank you.
Yeah, that, that was, that was everything that happened in my head. That after the research.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Any, anyone else? And I, I can't see.
Doctor, uh, Doctor Shiva Jackson, Ms. Millhouse is next.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Epps. Um, I would like to suggest, uh, because I've, I've, I developed a lot of vision and mission statements uh, that actually what's listed as the vision, it has action in it, which is really more of a mission statement. And the mission statement is really more of a vision statement because a vision has more like a lofty kind of concept. And when you talk about a culture of inclusion, that's huge. And that is more of a vision statement than a mission. So I, and, and, and I apologize for being a nerd about things like that. Uh, both statements are very powerful. But I think the vision that we have is, is really more action-oriented, which is more like a mission statement. So there, so the titles could be reversed.
Right, but the wording I would also state would need to be changed somewhat in the vision because it, it, in, instead of saying, the vision is where we hope to be. Like, it's, it's saying what, what does it look like for us? What does the end of the road look like, right? In our, in our imaginary world, our goal is to be here. So if you're suggesting to flop the two, right? That the vision is a culture versus to create. The vision is that it's already created. That's what we, it's already there. It's happened already, right? That's what we want to get to, that we are, we have a culture of inclusion and we just take off create.
Yeah, if you made that into a vision, you would take out, you would take out of creation. The vision would be a culture of inclusion. So that's a huge cultural shift for us. And so, yes, that would become a vision at that point.
Yes.
Yeah.
We would take out create.
Yep.
Um, and I'm okay with flopping. I'm, I'm, this is what, I'm a believer in you create a foundation and then we build upon it, right? Or we kind of scrap it and start over, so I can go with that.
Yeah, because that vision includes, like, everything, it, which is powerful. It really, we're talking about the policies, the practice, the standards. So that is truly vision, that we want to do that. That's huge.
So what I hear you saying is the vision will become a culture of inclusion where family engagement practices are embedded in PG CPS policies, practices, and standards, equipping all stakeholders with the tools to support student academic achievement.
Yes.
The mission would be?
Begin, where you say to cultivate. That's a, that's a verb. That's an action. Yeah.
To cultivate collaboration. So are you suggesting we take out everything up to two?
Yep, mhm. Yes, yes. The submission is the mission of the Parent and Community Advisory Council is to, then the rest of it is a mission statement.
Okay. Okay. Okay, thank you, Dr. Jackson. Any, any other hands up? Because I, I can't see what, so I would need you to tell me.
Madam Chair, Ms. Adrian Brown?
Yes, Ms. Walker? I'm sorry, who'd you say, Mr. Um?
I was saying the next hand was Ms. Adrian Brown.
Ms. Brown?
How you doing, everybody? Good evening. Um, the only small comment I had is just, um, the use of the word stakeholders. A lot of time when you say stakeholders, it encompasses a larger audience or people outside of the council. So I don't, um, just that one where I, first of all, I agree with flip-flopping. I think the way you guys talked it through was great and I agree. But, um, just the use of the word stakeholders in both documents. Uh, when you were writing it, what did you envision as the, who, who those stakeholders are?
The stakeholders were, you know, the stakeholders were everyone in PG CPS.
So I would be cautious, including everyone in PG CPS and a stakeholder, and a mission envisioned for this council. Because it seems like then we're reaching outside of just the mission and vision of the council into something larger, which we may not have the authority to do so. So maybe instead of stake, stakeholders saying all council members? That way we can be specific with our.
This, this will be, I think the stakeholders is there because of the collaborator.
All the stakeholders. Yeah, we're equipping all stakeholders with a mission. So let's go down to the mission. What, what my, my point with that was, we're equipping all stakeholders with the tools to support. Now, I can see, you know, us saying family, you know, parents, family, and community with the tools to support academics achievement. But it's not council-specific. It's not, this was not about the PCAC. This was more about how we are supporting, you know, the, the culture shift in PG CPS. Okay. Thank you.
Then Ms. Walker had her hand up.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I was just going to agree with Dr. Jackson on, um, changing the mission to the vision, the vision to the mission. Um, that's my only comment at this time.
Okay, thank you. Can, can we go back though, um, to the stakeholders' conversation? Because I, I, what I hear, right, is that the mission and vision statement for the PCAC seems to be very broad that we're reaching outside of, um, the, the work, but as an advisory council, we are advising, right? Um, and so if as advisory group, we are providing some insight, providing recommendations, um.
Like, under the visual, I guess, the vision, once we stick, uh, the sentence that says all stakeholders engage in effective, even if we were just to add something like to encourage all stakeholders to engage in.
Uh huh.
Might a little bit. Um, and even the second one, um, a culture of inclusion where family engagement practices are embedded in the PGS policies, practice, and standards, equipping all stakeholders. Um, if there was even a word we can add in to just say that we're just trying to facilitate or support or encourage um, that process.
Well, I guess.
Just adding that extra word. I don't know.
But for me, for the vision, that's what we want, right? We, we, we want them, I, I, I can align and agree with you with the, the vision piece, right? I mean, well, what's, we're going to just keep it as simple, what's, it's currently the vision, right? That, that statement there, I, I can see because we're talking about an activity in, in what we're going to be doing, right? From an advisory perspective. But the, the mission is really what we are hoping to accomplish.
That's what you mean now with the, with the mission. Yeah. So maybe we can add a couple of words to the vision?
Yep.
It would. So to encourage all stakeholders to engage?
Engage, yeah, to encourage all stakeholders to engage in effective multi-directional communication. Yep.
Okay.
Yep. To encourage all stakeholders to engage. Say, yes, yes.
If I may, um, I would suggest maybe instead of encourage, we empower. Um, might be a verb that would, would help sort of shape it. And honestly, I, I agree with the, uh, flipping vision and mission, but I do kind of wonder if that all stakeholders sentence should remain part of the vision. Um, it could flow after, uh, tools to support student academic achievement. And then, um, maybe it's where all stakeholders are empowered to engage in effective, multi-directional communication, dot, dot, dot. I mean, because, because that is sort of, uh, an aspirational.
Yes. Aspiration.
Uh huh. Uh huh.
But, uh, and thank you for, for getting the first kick on drafting this because these things are not easy to pull together.
No, they're not.
Yeah, and, and no, and I, I appreciate you all, the, the feedback, so, um, and I, and I want to ask for forgiveness because.
No, you, thank you.
No, no, no. I mean, I have to kind of reiterate back what I'm hearing to make sure what I heard was correct, so I did not miss anything. Is that, Mr. Ross, what you just stated is. Is that, Mr. Ross, what you just stated is, um, you agree with the stakeholder as the term. But that we can also include to empower, right? In, in that. Go ahead.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think that, you know, we, we need something about what, what our action is in there or what our goal is for that. And that's to empower stakeholders, to, to give them that ability to engage. In the end, once, uh, everything has been made perfect, then they will engage. But until then, we're working to empower them.
Okay, so let's do this. Um, I need to make a motion that we adopt, um, these, uh, the vision and mission statement. And then we be, we move into our discussion, making the recommendations. And then we will, um, then move into adopting those recommendations, just like we did with the bowels. Is, is everybody in agreement with that?
Yes.
Yes.
I am.
I am.
Okay, and so what we're gonna do is, I need someone to make a motion. Yes, Ms. Rosa.
Yes, um, Ms. Welsh has her hand up and.
Oh, okay.
Ms. Walker did again.
Okay. Okay, cuz maybe you should take the, um, vision down for me for a moment cuz I can't see anything but that document. I'm sorry. I'm sorry, everyone. I'm blindsided. Ms. Walker. It was who, who was first?
Mrs. Walker.
But let me just say this, I, I, I'll go ahead and make the motion. I do then want to make a statement when we get into the discussion.
Yes.
Motion that we accept the mission and vision statement that we just reviewed, uh, for the PCAT.
A second.
Okay. All in favor?
Who was that? That's a second? I, I'm sorry, I didn't catch you second. Was that Dr. Jackson?
Yes, yes.
I thank you.
And we can't vote yet there because now we have to have a discussion.
Oh, yeah, cuz we had discussion on the floor. So, um, but, right, so let's go back to the discussion now.
So, so, so what I wanted to say was, is that if you go to the policy on the PCAT, it does say that the board believes that it's critically important to consider voices of the community, parents, guardians, teachers, school-based staff, residents, community associations, other key community stakeholders who have a shared interest and investment in the well-being of children. So I do think the term stakeholders is appropriate and is in alignment with the policy too.
Yeah, because what I didn't want to do is I didn't want to write all that out. I didn't want to put all that in there. So I just said stakeholders.
No, so that I can. So.
I, I appreciate that. No, but I, I think, um, Ms. Brown, thank you though. And I definitely want to go back to it cuz you, you know, got my brain moving. So I think this really helped open up the discussion about how inclusive we are going to be and what does it actually look like, right? And, and who are we talking about in this? And so, um, if I could go back to make sure that Ms. Walker will have this captured correctly in the minute meetings, I will go back and begin to outline what was the suggestions that were made. Is that okay? Um, and it may be helpful, Ms. Walker, if you, if whatever you have right now, if you can say who was in line first. Because I didn't get that much. So how, how do you want, how does this want to work to help you out?
Um, I can read what I captured in my, in my notes and see if that is correct.
Okay.
So I have, currently have the vision is to create a culture of inclusion where family engagement practices are embedded in PG CPS policies, practice and standards equipped or not equipping, but empowering all stakeholders with the tools to support student and academic achievement.
Yes.
Good.
Okay.
Yes.
The mission.
But wait a minute, Ms. Walker. I'm sorry. We, we took out, you, you took out to create, right? So the, the vision will be a culture.
Okay, so take out to create. The vision, a culture of inclusion where family engagement practices are embedded in the PG CPS policies, practice, practices and standards, empowering all stakeholders with the tools to support student academic achievement.
Yes.
The mission of the parent and community advisory council is to cultivate col- collaboration between all PG CPS constituents with a key focus on engagement practices that promote equal participation between parents and the school district as partners in education. Empower all stakeholders to engage in effective, multi-directional communication. Follow continuous improvement practices that ensure every student excels academically while collectively creating a safe, engaging school environment where voices are elevated to bring about positive change.
Yes.
May I make one suggestion? Instead of equal, we use the word equitable. Because equitable is more powerful than equal. It's providing the needs, meeting the needs that people have to be able to be engaged. And I don't know, I, I just want to throw that out. I don't know if everybody would agree to that, but instead of equal, it's equitable. Or we could say equal and equitable. It's, it's really up to the group.
No, that's, that, that, I'm, I am okay with equitable. I mean, um, and, and I understand the reason you are asking for the revision of that. Are there any other comments? No. So, Ms. Walker, can you read that one more time with the word equitable?
The mission of the parent and community advisory council is to cultivate collaboration between all PG CPS constituents with a key focus on engagement practices that promote equitable participation between parents and the school district as partners in education. Empower all stakeholders to engage in effective, multi-directional communication. Follow continuous improvement practices that ensure every student excel, excels academically while collectively creating a safe, engaging school environment where voices elevated, are elevated to bring about positive change.
Thank you. Are there any questions regards to what was read? With the revisions and the recommendations for the vision and mission statement, Ms. Brown?
Um, I feel like somebody, was it Mr. Ross who suggested moving one of the sentences from one to the other? Was that ever resolved or? I know it was brought up, but I, I can't remember if it was discussed or resolved.
Mr. Ross?
As I was hearing it, it sounded like that was what had happened, um, in, in the revised mission, uh, mission statement there.
Okay. All right. I just wasn't sure. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? No? Okay, um, and so if there are no, uh, other offers for amendments or revision, uh, we can move forward with a motion to adopt the revised vision and mission statement to read the vision. A culture of inclusion where family engagement practices are embedded in PG CPS policies, practices and standards. Empowering all stakeholders with the tools to support student academic achievement. The mission of the parent and community advisory council is to cultivate collaboration between all PG CPS constituents with a key focus on engagement practices that promote equitable participation between parents and the school district as partners in education. Empower all stakeholders to engage in effective, multi-directional communication. Follow continuous improvement practices that ensure every student excels academically while collectively creating a safe, engaging school environment where voices are elevated to bring about positive change. Can I have a motion?
We do have a motion and a second, so we are ready for a vote.
Now, can we move now that we've motioned and we have a second to vote? Ms. Walker. Can you call, roll call for vote, please?
Yes, Dr. Jackson?
What's your vote?
Hi.
Ms. Welsh?
Yes.
Um, Mr. Epps?
Yes.
Ms. Wood?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Ross?
Yes.
Ms. Holland Scher?
Yes.
Ms. Milhouse?
Yes.
Ms. Walker, yes. And, um, Dr. Porter?
Yes.
So all that are present have voted.
And so we have a majority.
Good evening, Dr. Bagels here. Yes.
I'm sorry, Dr. Bagel.
Welcome. And, um, and at that time, so the motion passes that we now have adopted a vision and mission statement for the PCAT. Congratulations, everyone. And, um, now moving on to item two point two, the committee report on the goal setting based on district concerns. Um, Rosa, if you can pull up that document. So after, um, going through the minute meetings, I, uh, pulled out the commonalities that everyone shared in discussion when we spoke about the why, what some of the concerns in the respective areas that we are representing. And, um, the commonalities were that, um, we all want engagement to be improved in the school district. We want to increase involvement from parents, family. How do we get more, um, community stakeholders involved? Um, we spoke about, um, advocacy, developing, um, um, resources to supporting parents to become better advocates for their children. Uh, but also, how are we making sure that we are, um, engaging um, all of the constituents, especially, um, individuals or families, um, done from the immigrant and refugee population? And I, I didn't, there was nothing that surprised me. Um, I was very pleased that we all are pretty much, um, wanting the same thing to happen or seeing that the, um, the one thing that we can do as a district that may help us in so many other areas is how we engage with each other. That may help us, um, with transportation and how we're communicating some of the issues and getting feedback from community partners on how we can address those issues. Um, what does it look like for the civic and community engagement to be more involved as well as the business community and the faith-based community? How do we get, um, uh, you know, individuals who may not have children in the school district, but are still very invested in what happens? Because it, it, it not only impacts their community, but they really want to see, um, each gen- generation to excel. And so, um, with that information, um, you know, I started to dig a little deeper into really understanding what can we do as a council? Um, and I would like to open up discussion regarding the next action steps as we, um, you know, address. You know, what are some of the policies that are shaping engagement? What does that look like? And, um, I want to stop. Does anyone have any comment or any question based on what I pulled from what you all shared in our meeting in October, November? What month is this? December and November? No? Okay, um, Ms. Lopez, can you pull up, um, the twenty eighteen report from the American Institute for Research? When I took that, um, I looked at our information and then I started doing my own research, trying to figure out what policies were in place other than policy zero one zero five, um, which governs the parent, family and community involvement for PG CPS. But I wanted to see what were the best practices out there and of course, everything that kept coming up aligned with Title One. Right? And not all school receives Title One funding. Um, so I needed to see what practices were out there or what studies addressed equitable, um, family engagement strategies. And I came upon this study, and although it's titled family engagement, there are, um, five categories of equitable family engagement strategies that they addressed, which were making a commitment to equitable family engagement, making equitable family engagement business as usual, building relationships between staff and families, meaningful involving and engaging families and trusted community advocates and engaging outside of the school building. And this was the only report that I found that looked at, and I'm going to use the term all stakeholders um, to make sure that they are getting the feedback, making it inclusive and saying, how do we work to build, um, equitable engagement strategies? And for me, reading this, I was like, how is PG CPS engaging family, community stakeholders was one of the questions. And then I started saying, okay, how, you know, it should be inclusive, it should be equitable, right? But it needs to be clearly defined and I could not find a clear definition anywhere on PG CPS's site that really defined PG CPS's, um, definition on engagement from a district standpoint that was inclusive of all of these stakeholders. And so what I would like to do is give the council some time to review this material and identify how we could then begin to work, um, to maybe draft a survey, to suggest some policy changes ourselves. But how can this report help us look at the areas that we discuss? And how do we help the school district actually cultivate a, um, a culture here, PG CPS that, that understands and believes that the most important thing that you could have is strong engagement strategies to help move us from good to great, to help us meet the, the goals that are set out in the framework. And I'm going to stop there and I want to open it up, um, for discussion. Based on what I, and I know you haven't had time to read this. I want to give this to everybody and then we come back in January. Um, but I wanted to share with you all the information that I found, and it's only twenty pages, so it's a very quick, easy. It was interesting to me that can help us kind of gauge, how do we want to move forward? And what does that look like for a focus area for us as a council? And it's okay if you don't have any comments right now.
I have a comment.
Yes.
Um, this is Robin Welsh. So, um, I agree with you and I, I'm anxious to read the, the, um, the packets that you're going to send out to us because I think it'll be very helpful. I think it's also critical to be, to be thinking about what we're, what is, what is it that we're going to be encouraging people to be engaged about? And I think that the strategic plan is, is that the system, the school system, um, has taken the strategic plan and there's five pillars to it that they look at, which when you put it all together is pretty comprehensive in terms of the school system. And on top of that, the Board of Education, all their policy, any changes in policies, uh, since the new strategic plan, it references over to the strategic plan. So the whole idea is about what is happening and how is the system accomplishing what it has set out to do? And what do these things mean even within the strategic plan? So if somehow we could marry the, the process of engagement and, and encouraging, getting more engagement, but then also using the, the, um, material or the content, the substance of the strategic plan as the focus of engagement, that might be really valuable since that's where, that's the focus of the system.
No, I, I agree. And that, that was one of the reasons why during our first meetings, I shared the PG CPS strategic framework. Uh, because in going through that framework, I, I wanted to see where I could clearly identify what community engagement looked like. Um, because I pulled, and, and I'm not a pack rat, so I don't want you all to think that I. Um, because I pulled, and, and I'm not a PAC rat, so I don't want you all to think that I am. But, but I, I do say, um, some of the old, um, items, well, you can't really see it there, but it's, it is the building proud in PG CPS, uh, November two thousand eighteen, right? Plan, it, that clearly number four says family and community engagement. The strategy is community engagement, right? But it just says community engagement forums. I have another one, um, from two thousand thirteen through sixteen plan that clearly states in here, partnering with the Family Institute, and it talks about, um, how that family engagement component is clearly embedded in the framework. But when I read the current one, it took me a lot of time and I'm still trying to figure out where is it aligning? And I didn't see the alignment between how does the P C A, how does the faith community? How does the civic and community groups, the business community? How is that aligning in these five pillars, right? That go up to the four outcome goals that go up to the vision and the mission for PG CPS. A- and so we, we do have some work cut out for us, a- and I'm hoping that liaisons, you know, from the CEO can help guide us because engagement is very broad. You know?
May I just, I just wanna share with you all, ever since, uh, transformation twenty twenty six, when it hits, that is my job to go through it and say, where do parents see themselves? They don't. And I think it's a incredible opportunity for P C A to help the district really think about how do we transform even our writing and how we lay out our plans so that parents see themselves? As a parent, I don't see myself in it. And I work for the school system. My boss knows I raise this at every meeting. Uh, we need to, we need to be able to see ourselves. And P C A is, uh, an outstanding opportunity to make sure that that transformation that in beds, families and community in everything that the system does comes into fruition. Um, I'm like you, I'm, I'm a PAC rat and I read them all. And, uh, and those you'd named, I have them unfortunately probably in this room with me, uh, because it's important for us to be able to as parents. If we're gonna articulate to other community stakeholders about the vision and what Prince George's County is about for helping our children, we need to see ourselves, but we also need to help other people see themselves in this room.
And I, I wanna make a disclaimer, I'm not, I'm not a PAC rat.
Well, I am, I'm sorry.
I like to keep, you know, certain information and, um, you know, I always like to see where we're going. Where we started off and where we're going and then how that changes. I'm just like strategic plans. I'm, I'm a geek for strategic plans.
Yeah.
But that is me. That is I. So I'll make that disclaimer. So, uh, yeah, we have a big, this is broad, and so I wanna share this information with you all so we can come back and have a ro- robust discussion, um, about where we go from here. Are there any other comments, feedback? A- and it's not just parents, right? And, and it really is, how do we all, because when you read this, 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 this report, i- it talks about, you know, the teachers, how do they define engagement? How do community members define engagement? I mean, engagement, how administrators define engagement? And, and then how do we bring all those various definitions together to have one inclusive, right, definition that everyone can pretty much see themselves in? Um, and that we're not creating in a silo. Right? Um, and so if there is no further discussion on that, um, I, I would like to also just, just think about, you know, one of the things that me, we may wanna come up with is a survey, and that leads me to item two point three. Gathering community feedback. Um, PG CPS has launched a culture and climate survey. Um, and this is what I pulled from the, uh, latest survey that I was able to find the data for. Since two thousand and seven, PG CPS has conducted a school climate survey on a biannual basis, which included participation of students, parents and teachers to assess the step to which students, parents and teachers perceive the district schools, um, are conducive to learning. The research and evaluation, um, team, right, the Department of Testing and Research, they conduct the survey during the spring of two thousand seventeen, and that was the latest survey, um, data I was able to find. Um, and if there are some out there that I, that's not on the website somewhere, um, Dr. Jackson, Ms. Welsh, if, if you all find it or know where we can get some of that buried data, that would be great to, um, let us, you know, have access to that. Um, but some of the factors which stakeholders were asked to their opinion included school leadership, the level of safety in schools, parental involvement, which when analyzed reveal what the respondents think about the school's overall climate. And, um, it is interesting to read when you look at it and what I would, um, I would just add, it doesn't, when you take the climate survey and you go through the questions, you, you will see that, um, the questions don't really prompt you to really talk about engagement. Right? It, it, it asks you questions like, you know, um, are you getting the resources you need to help with your child? Do you have access to the building? Um, but, but engagement is a lot deeper than that. And one of the things that I would like to suggest is that we also take into consideration, um, do we ask the board to create a survey? You know, with Dr. Gosin and her team that really focuses on engagement and engagement practices. Um, item two point four, committee discussion about policy zero one zero five, that brings me to the current parent, family and community involvement pol- board policy, which is last updated June twenty eighth, two thousand and twelve. Um, the, one of the references that was quoted in the policy was, um, that it aligned with the No Child Left Behind Act passed in two thousand and one, which the current law, which was adopted in twenty fifteen, Every Child Succeeds Act, um, the policy is no longer in alignment. Um, and so that, that is definitely something that I think that we need to take into consideration is making a recommendation to the board um, to not only update the policy, but then, um, this is an opportunity for them to revise it and make it an equitable policy. Um, I do wanna state that PG CPS does have an updated Title One Parent and Family Engagement Policy Plan that was revised FY, um, twenty fifteen, in line with, um, the updated Every Child Succeeds Act. Um, it is out there, it's available, but again, I'm not sure if these practices are utilized equitably across the school district.
May I just, I can provide that information. Those are only utilized in Title One schools. Uh, and they're required. However, for decades now, we've been asking, can, they are good policies and practices. Why not every school? So that could be something that P C A might wanna investigate and suggest as well.
Yes, yep. And, and I'll say this, in reading, um, that policy, i- it, it stated as a policy plan because it's not really written as a policy. And it's pulling information from the act itself and outlining it in the document of what is required by the law. So, um, it says policy plan. You know, but Ms. Welsh, you know, you let me know, but it doesn't align with the, the, the formatting in of the PG CPS's board policies that are out there, cuz it doesn't even have a most recent, um, review or revision date on it. Um, but that.
It actually aligns to U S D E. That's who they respond to.
Yes, for, for the plan itself. Yeah, yeah.
Um, may I just say, that is, it's an old policy because it was, the, uh, last date was, uh, they looked at it was, um,
Twenty fifteen?
Two thousand and twelve. Is where I see it. Policy amended in two thousand and twelve, so it's ten years old.
No, that's zero one zero five.
Yeah, that's the school system. That's the school system's policy, but she saw my Title One. Theirs has to be updated more frequently because it has to go to U, M S D E and U S D E. Uh, but the district policy has not been updated.
But it needs to be because, then that's a main reason, but also because it does reference, um, No Child Left Behind and
Yeah.
So it's, it's, um, so actually I've already started to list the policies that we'll be looking, we need to look at for the upcoming year. So I will put this one on the list too, because I do think this one definitely needs to be updated. I actually appreciate the fact it brought to our attention.
Yes, and, and I, I definitely want the, the, it being updated with the input from P C A.
Mm-hmm, absolutely.
Um, a- and I wanna just outline the difference between the two laws regarding parent involvement, it is, is, it is, this, you know, um, the No Child Left Behind didn't require states to include parent input when creating their state plans. But the, um, the ESA, E S S A requires states to get input from parents and families as they create state plans. So that was the extent of the change for the section for parent involvement. Um, and so, Ms. Welsh, I appreciate it because I was going to suggest that the council, that we propose that the board revises, um, policy zero one zero five to align with the twenty fifteen E S S A, Every Student Succeeds Act. Um, and, um, which was also reauthorized as the Every Child, um, Succeeds Act versus Every Student Succeeds Act. Um, and to also include best practices as allowed, aligned in the American Institute for Research, um, Strategies for Equitable Family Engagement. And so, um, what I would like to do is definitely, you know, you all have the information, you all can review. Um, and we come back to have a more robust discussion about what that looks like and how do we properly move forward with the recommendation to the, um, board. Okay. So any questions, comments? No? Okay, um, so at this point where, um, item three point zero, follow-up and next steps. Any follow-up, um, from the P C A meeting, we'll be posting on board docs upon receipt. And, um, the next meeting date will be on Wednesday, January eleventh, twenty twenty-three at seven P M. And I would like to please remind everyone that, um, Ms. Lopez and the team, um, continuously send out reminders. And it's very important that we, um, note in the link that she sends whether we will not be in attendance because we need a quorum to hold these meetings. Um, and then we are also working on ways to, uh, make sure that maybe we do a group text, I don't know, but we need people just to respond, let her know that we're coming because, you know, we do have a lot of work to do. I mean, we're, we're like, we're still in discovery, um, phases, so I am also working to make sure that I could, I can't meet with everybody as a whole in between meetings, but to reach out and to have some small group discussions about any concerns that anyone might have, but I'm just asking that we walk away from this meeting with the material that we read it. Um, our takeaways are, I'm looking at the family engagement, um, practice, um, that we look at the strategic framework PG CPS has. We look at the current, um, policy zero one zero five that governs the engagement, um, practices for PG CPS. Um, and just really determine how we wanna move forward as a council. Um, I am working on a, um, executive summary, um, file so we could, um, do our report. And I would like for us to be able to do our first, uh, report in February to talk about where we are, what we're doing and, um, how we're moving right now as a committee. So, any questions, comments? And please, please send me suggestions, give me input, um. I'm just trying to make sure that we can come together and have some things that we're working on, and it's just not me just sending stuff out. I feel like we're in discovery phase. Um, but we gonna get here, we gonna get there, we gonna get here, we gonna come where, we gonna get somewhere.
Just, I'm sorry, just, uh, just, uh, clarification. You said January the eleventh. Are we just moving it to the second Wednesday in January, just for January, or?
Ye- yes, um, I believe it was a holiday, Ms. Lopez, um, had mentioned, I think that's the usual Wednesday, Ms. Lopez?
Yes, sorry, um, so since, uh, December is, um, I mean, yes, the schools are closed and the office is closed as well. Uh, we need to post these documents, um, on board docs, um, at least for business days prior to, so the office will be closed.
Got it.
Yeah, with that being said, we needed to, um.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. For, Ms. Jack, Dr. Jackson.
I think Ms. Hollenshed had her hand up.
Ms. Hollenshed?
Thank you. I know that, I'm sorry, I'm a little, my voice is going in and out. We had talked previously, I wanna say in the last meeting about creating like a form letter so that we can introduce the P C A to other community members. Will we discuss that during the January meeting?
So, um, that's already been drafted.
Okay.
If, um, our board liaison drafted that, that, um, I was mentioning that earlier, she drafted it, so we just now have to wait for them to finalize that.
Do, yeah, and I may have missed it. Did we get a copy of it before it went to the final draft?
No, I didn't create that.
Okay.
Liaison, she created it, and it's actually going to be coming out from the, from her, um, Dr. Gosin.
Okay.
I, I
Your board chair.
Miller is the board chair, but there will be a new board chair appointed in January, so whoever the new board chair is.
Okay. So do you think that we will have that possibly by the spring?
No, I, I've been pushing.
Okay.
I've been pushing, um, so has, you know, our board liaison, cuz she was in labor and had the baby, so January.
Okay.
January.
And I think the only reason that I'm asking about it again is because I know that that would be helpful as we're meeting with different people trying to explain exactly what we do. Um, because I know I meet with the schools and I'm meeting with different groups and it's like, well, what do y'all do? And I'm like, I think I'm telling each group a different story, but the same thing. So I wanna make sure it's consistent, and if one of the counterparts go out, that they're saying the same thing I'm saying.
Well, now we can use the vision and the mission statement.
Absolutely. Thank you very much for that.
Yep, now we can use that. Now we, now we have something while we're waiting to be introduced to the school district.
Okay, thank you.
And, and so I appreciate that. I, I've, I've been working, I'm trying.
The vision, I just wanna make sure I understand that correctly. The vision and mission statement is something that after this meeting, we can go ahead and hand out to folks that we encountered, that to our peers that we're talking to already.
Yes, we can.
I understand, okay.
Yes, we can. Dr. Jackson?
Uh, first of all, I just wanna thank everyone, um, and I just have to say, I've been working with different iterations of P C A since about, ooh, a long time ago, probably nineteen ninety-eight. And I am just so, uh, pumped right now and just looking at and listening to the conversations that we're having this early about the impact that can be made by this body. Um, so I wanna say kudos to everybody. I'm thankful to be a part of this. Uh, and I also, uh, would like to just give a, a quick shout out, uh, to Mrs. Millhouse. She just received an award from the National Association of Black School Educators as Parent of the Year. That conference was held at the Gaylord last week, and I was just delighted to be there with her and to celebrate, um, for, for the many things that she's done over the years as a model for, for all of us that is, that are parents. So thank you for being our partner and being recognized like that, so.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Jackson. You could, uh, yeah, thank you. Thank, thank you, Dr. Jackson. You could, uh, yeah, thank you. I'm not gonna cry this time, guys. Thank you, Dr. Jackson. Thank you, thank you. And and so on on that note, I wanna um, thank everyone for a great meeting. May I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
A second.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposed? None opposed, the meeting is adjourned at eight ten P M. Thank you all, and have a great night, Merry Christmas. Happy holidays, happy Kwanzaa, Hanukkah, happy everything. Y'all have a great one.